The March 28th Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Mahoney, you have the pledge. All rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. And, uh, do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. It's now time for our comments from the public. We ask that you please keep your comments respectful and recognize that any person who is speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence. The first person up tonight is Victoria Andrews.
Thank you and good evening, Victoria Andrews, resident of Des Moines. First, I want to thank the council for respecting both the process and citizens by acknowledging the need for a second reading of the budget. I am in favor of moving to a biennial budget. You asked for our input, so that's one of mine. I appreciate that you actually asked Mr. Friend whether he and his staff would be able to handle the heavy load to make the switch and reassured by his confidence about the task. Forecasting and long-term planning will be the only way to avoid the anticipated shortfall. Speaking of shortfalls, I hope that when SGR brings you the final candidates for city manager that you will not negotiate another golden parachute. Mr. Mathias was hired for his financial acumen, but in his last year as city manager, he did add a new assistant city manager position with a very generous compensation package. And he will be smiling all next year as he collects a salary he is no longer earning. So I urge you to please learn from those expensive mistakes. Offer the new city manager step one, or at most step two, in the salary schedule. As for the levy discussion, I recall Mr. Mathias stating on numerous occasions that there would be no increase in taxes needed to service the bond debt. So you will need to explain to citizens how the levy lift under consideration tonight is different. We, the public, have made it clear that public safety is a critical issue. Maintaining the officers hired with ARPA funds and the ability to recruit additional officers means the money will have to come from somewhere. Lifting the property tax levy from 90 cents to $1.35 per 1,000, which was what was proposed on March 14th, is going to be a tough pill to swallow. And so is the new one that I see tonight bringing it up to $1.40 per 1,000. So I would urge the levy language on the ballot to state specifically, it is only for public safety and that seniors and disabled citizens will be exempt. If I see that language on the ballot, I will be leaning toward voting for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next up, we have Jim Lamp.
Hey, Jim Lamparello, also from the city of Des Moines. Want to start by thanking you all for volunteering your time to come here. Definitely appreciate your service on the council. And in my mind, government has a very high responsibility. And that's the responsibility to spend other people's money. And that's a task that's made even more difficult by the fact that pretty much everybody has a different opinion on how that money should be spent. But I think one thing we can all agree on is that raising taxes should be an absolute last resort. That asking citizens to give up more of their hard-earned money should only be done as the last possible option. Now, please don't take this as a stereotypical call to cut spending because government is too big. Instead, this should be an opportunity to take an honest reflection, to look at our budget and see if there are opportunities for efficiencies or ways to do things better. In my job in aerospace, we don't deal with dollar budgets. We deal with weight budgets, trying to make things as light as possible. And a common scenario is that an engineer designs a part and they say it's going to weigh 100 pounds. And the chief engineer comes back and says, "No, it can only weigh 50 pounds." And the engineer goes back to their desks and comes up with better ways. And inevitably, they come back with a part that meets the goal of the chief engineer. And I say that because it's easy to lose sight of how your piece fits into the broader picture. When I'm designing my 100-pound part, it's hard to picture how it's going to fit on a 200,000-pound airplane. When I'm looking at my $10,000 portion of the budget, it's hard to see how that fits into a multimillion-dollar city budget. And that's why we need the forcing function coming down from the top to challenge people to find those inefficiencies and find areas where we can do more with less. And that's key because every dollar we can find in the budget process is one less dollar that we need to take from taxes. Now, I'm not saying a budget scrub is going to be the be-all, end-all solution. I'm sure we'll go back through different line items and it will be that departments need every single last cent that they asked for. But it's probably likely that you're going to find areas where people were more conservative in their estimates, where people are spending money maybe in not the best way and we can be a little bit more efficient for it. So my question for the council tonight is can you honestly say to yourself that raising taxes is the last resort? And maybe you can, and we're facing a harsh reality that we have to deal with. But if you can't say that, maybe that's a sign that you need to take a second look at the budget. And by the way, general reminder for everybody to cancel that Netflix subscription you're not using, $10 a month starts to add up. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. So now we are going to move to committee chair reports and we're going to begin with municipal facilities. And Chair Nutting was unable to make it. He's had some emergency work situation. So did you want to pass to...
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to the co-chair, Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. It was quite a meeting we had. We looked at some CIP updates, Midway Park, where we'd recently acquired new properties. The design work is in process. They hope to have that in by May of '26, so there'll be the design work, then the work, and so forth. So it's exciting for that. And we've definitely done a good job as a city getting other people's money to do that in that particular neighborhood, which is going to tremendously benefit them. We had a discussion on Cecil Powell. We've needed play equipment there forever. We've had many people come in and ask for that. That looks like in June, that should be opening. And of course, they continue to work on the fieldhouse play equipment, which should be open sometime in late May. And then, of course, we discussed the Des Moines Triangle Park. They were talking about the design work based on the survey they just recently closed. I think it's an excellent add to the city for, as far as representation from our north entrance and, of course, honoring World War I veterans, even more importantly. The Founder's Lodge, they talked about that. And this talks about our historic building, some of the difficulties. They first found asbestos in it. They had to remove that. And now they found structural issues. So they're working on that and they're going to assess what the cost would be. We also got an update on the senior activity center pipe burst. It looks like they continue to offer services outside, but it looks like maybe the latter part of April they'll be able to open. So that's good. One of the most exciting things is the Little League, or the fields at Stephen J. Underwood are currently used by a lot of softball players. And occasionally, they would be used by the Little League, but they didn't have fences that were Little League size, you might say, or in accordance with their guidelines. Our city manager has done some good work, working with them, and it looks like through donations from the Little League and some efforts by our city manager, we're going to get that, be able to do both. So we'll have more rentals at that field, increased revenues, and so forth to support that park and somebody on site. And the last one, the folks from the Marina came in and talked about the parking system coming online. It's installed. They're doing some testing. They're waiting for some key parts. They have all the parts for Redondo. They don't know exactly when they're going to go live with the system, so they're not selling passes yet, but they are doing some testing and stuff like that. So there should be an announcement soon. It's $2.50 an hour, up to a maximum of 10 for a day use. Residents will pay $40 and non-residents will pay 80 when that occurs. So those of you that visit the Marina, that'd be great. And also, it will transfer over to Redondo as well. And so your pass can work at either one. So we're excited about that. They're looking at how they can trench in combination with the installation of the bathrooms there. And that's my report for the municipal facilities. Thank you.
A full meeting. So, and my compliments to the election of chair while driving in a car. And Jeremy's been really working hard. So, thank you. So the next committee is Economic Development Committee, and we had a similar situation. So I'm going to leave it to the chair. If you'd like to pass that.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to my co-chair, Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. We had the Economic Development Committee. We approved the minutes and then the work plan for the rest of the year, pretty much as proposed. And then we got into what were the real sort of meat and potatoes of the committee meeting, which is a discussion of the short-term rental code, which took up nearly half our time. It's being proposed that we develop that code. That would involve both Airbnb overnight rental-like situations, but also what they call household amenities rentals, people that are renting their pools or their backyards for dogs, or, you know, there's a lot of really creative ways to do that. Those are now businesses that are operating in our city that we don't capture anything from. They don't have a permit. We don't know who to call if there's problems. We need to address that. And we are very late coming to that party. The advantage of coming late to the party is that there are lots of examples out there. And so we were provided with a very good memo from Mr. George, putting back on his city attorney hat again. And we appreciate that. And kind of hashed through a number of the issues that have come up. And I think that he has been provided quite a bit of feedback now on how to approach putting together what would be a short-term rental code that would be functional for the city, but not oppressive. We want to facilitate businesses in the community. We want to facilitate the ability of our citizens to be able to make a little extra money if they've got something that people want. But we also don't want it to, you know, drive down property values in the neighborhood or raise them up to the point where people can't do it. And so there's a lot of balancing to be done. And hopefully, we heard lots of good information and we'll come back with a good plan for that proposed ordinance. The next item was the comprehensive plan update, which really ate up the whole last half hour and we didn't quite get through it all, but that's okay. There was a number of things that were asked as sort of policy questions. Do we want to use a friendlier format in such as our community and we plan for versus the community and we are required to plan? And I think the consensus that came out of that is that while a lot of the planning that we do is a requirement, planning is a function of government. And it's a function for our community. And so where appropriate, I believe that the language will reflect that inclusive sense. But, you know, where it's something that is onerous to people in the community, we can certainly, you know, cite chapter and verse. We're required to do this because that's part of the comprehensive plan. And then the other sort of policy question was the tribal acknowledgement and in what way do we want to work with acknowledging that we're working with the tribes to develop this comprehensive plan? Had a few more questions, and so that's going to go back to try to answer those, whether we want to get really specific about a particular policy and how we're going to work with the tribe, or whether we want a generalized statement and what's most important there. Then there were another, just some council questions on land use regarding updates that were required by the changes in the various county and state laws that have been passed. But they're, you know, they're always significant, but it's an updated process. It's not necessarily a, something that is a whole policy change for our city. And so I thought, you know, we had a very good discussion on a number of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And if you'd like to continue and report out about the Citizens Advisory Committee last night?
Yes, last night, we had the first meeting of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I had been warned that, you know, this is somewhat like herding cats, but I'm a cat person, apparently. I actually thought we had a really good discussion within the advisory committee about a number of things and, you know, how the committee was going to work. And, you know, I hope the committee comes forward with a lot of ideas of what they want to do and how they want to approach things. The first project that is kind of out there for the Citizens Advisory Committee is naming the alleyway behind the new theater. We have Creole Soul and Cubano Sangueles that are two wonderful restaurants. If you haven't been there, I would tell you to go. And they have seating out on the alley. The theater has already contracted with a florist on the down floor or the backside underneath next to their parking structure. And that will be a retail florist. We're operating out of there. So there are going to be a number of businesses that are run out of there. And you may remember that the city was instrumental in getting the wires buried underneath that alleyway so it would be accessible. There's still going to be light traffic going through there, but we're going to try to develop that into a more retail-functioning alleyway. And it needs a name because anytime you have a place like that that's going to have businesses in it, it needs a name and an address so that public services know where to respond to if something happens. And so there are some requirements for that, not the least of which that it requires the city, the city council, to pass an ordinance naming it. And so the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to get together, collect a number of suggestions, and eventually come up with three suggestions to forward to the council. And then we'll have a public hearing on that and name the committee. And I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with. We also had a presentation from Dave Tuin with Government Resources. And he, Government Resources is the consulting firm. And he went through the process. So everybody on the Citizens Advisory Committee kind of got an update on the process, where we're at and what we're doing. But then he also asked, you know, two really good questions. One, what was, what were the things that are the opportunities that exist here in Des Moines that would encourage somebody? And everybody, we went around the table and everybody got to give their answers to that. And then two, he said, what are the challenges? And then also, we went around the table and everybody on the Citizens Advisory Committee got to give some input. So he's already starting to take input from a lot of sources back so that he can start working on putting together essentially the recruitment information. And then the last thing that we did, and believe me, that was a full night right there, was try to come up with the next meeting date. And at least for the moment, we're going to try to meet monthly. And the next meeting date for the Citizens Advisory Committee is April 24th? 24th, yeah, April 24th, which is a Wednesday night right here in council chambers. That was the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and it was lots of fun. And I do want to acknowledge that Mayor Buxton has asked me to sort of take the lead in running the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, while she just kind of steps back and uses that as a way to get input. And I appreciate the opportunity to do something with it. You know, so I'll be having a lot of interaction with the committee and I look forward to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next up, we have the city manager's report. And there's a few items here, so I'm going to pass the baton to city manager Tim George.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we're going to start with a presentation regarding item number four on the consent calendar, which is permitting illegal firework infraction ordinance. I just want to remind the council that this came about shortly after the Fourth of July last year, when we received, as we do every year, we receive a number of complaints after the fact from concerned residents about the number of illegal fireworks that were lit off throughout the neighborhoods and what they perceive to be a lack of a police response. And there's a lot of issues that create barriers for our officers to be able to enforce these types of infractions. And so what came out of that discussion at the time was an idea that Matt is going to present on tonight. And this is just a tool. This is a tool that officers can use that can help them. Fireworks remain illegal in Des Moines. That doesn't change that. So this was a tool, and I will hand it over to Matt Hutchins for his presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor, council, Matthew Hutchins, acting city attorney with the city of Des Moines, with the staff presentation on draft ordinance number 24-011 related to illegal fireworks. So society has come to realize in the past few years that personal consumer fireworks can have a number of serious consequences for those who are around us. The noise can be traumatic, excuse me, for people who have served or previously lived in war zones, or if they have other sensitivities from physical or psychological conditions. They upset both pets and wildlife, can lead to animals acting erratically, hiding, running away. Additionally, they're a fire hazard. Fireworks cost thousands of fires every year in this country. And additionally, they're a pretty bad pollutant. So recognizing these ill effects, the city enacted a firework ban that went into effect in 2006. While the overwhelming majority of residents respect the ban, there, as Tim said, there are still problems every year. Des Moines police have to respond to multiple complaints every Fourth of July. Part of the problem is, as with any regulation, the deterrent effect, to some degree, will always depend on how well it's enforced. So let's take a look at how our current firework ban is enforced. So the simplest scenario is neighbor calls and complains that there is a person on their own property lighting off fireworks. The officer arrives and the investigation will tend to go one of three ways. Either the officer will have actually seen the fireworks going off, the officer talks to the individual and they will admit that they were doing it, or the neighbor can explain to the officer what they saw. And when the officer gets this, they have what they need. They know a violation occurred. They know who did it. And with those two things, the officer can write a ticket. So realistically, it's not necessarily just a ticket. If there's been no prior incidents at this property, generally, what's going to happen is the officer's going to talk to the individual, explain why we have a firework ban, what that means. And if the person's cooperative, the person's probably going to get away with a warning. But either way, the message has been sent. So a little more complex situation for the officer. Neighbor calls. There's a Fourth of July party going on, several people on a property. Someone on the property is lighting off fireworks. So again, the officer can show up. He can, he or she can see the fireworks being lit. The individual will admit it upon being asked. Other people at the party can say, "Yeah, talk to John. It was him." Or the complaining neighbor may be able to specifically identify who it was. Either, "I know John. He owns that property. He's the one who is doing it," or him in the gray hoodie. He's the one who is doing it. Again, the officer now has knowledge that the violation occurred. They can identify who did it. And we have a ticket. And once again, the message has been delivered. Problem is, starts to arrive with our third scenario, which, again, neighbor calls, says there's a Fourth of July party, someone on the property is firing off fireworks. But this time, the officer has not managed to show up on time, didn't see it. Complaining neighbor is not able to identify which of the people on the property was doing it. No one's willing to admit it, and no one else at the party is going to identify the person who did it. And so what the officer is left with, this. And what that means is the officer knows that a violation has been committed but cannot specifically identify who did it. Now, one possible remedy is the officer cites everyone unless the courts sort of hash it out. But I consider that bad policy, and frankly, that would be illegal for the officer to do. So we would not ask them to do that. So essentially, no tickets, no message has been delivered, and they see no reason why to not start up again after the officer has left. But think about how this would be different if the officer is able to talk to the property owner or the person who's renting the place and say, "Did you know you can be held responsible for your guests lighting off the fireworks?" Now, the, sorry, now the host has the option of either telling the officer who's lighting the fireworks or they can take the ticket themselves. Either way, consequences have been imposed for the illegal activity and the message is heard. And this is what the worst part of our ordinance is meant to do. It puts responsibility on the homeowner or the renter for making sure their guests do not use the property they control to violate our fireworks ban that, again, has been in place since 2006. Now, obviously, there is a workaround to this violation, and that's what I call scenario four. So again, neighbor calls up. There's a Fourth of July party, multiple people attending. But this time, the property owner says, "I'm fine with you guys shooting off fireworks, but I don't want to get a ticket. So take it into the street." And that's what they do. And that's what they do. So again, uh, if the officer arrives on time and sees it, uh, the individual admits it, the neighbor or someone at the party who identifies who did it, uh, that's great. The officer can issue a ticket, we're golden. Uh, but what if we are back to this situation? Well, that's what part two of our ordinance is designed to, uh, address. Now, someone may think they're washing their hands by, uh, telling their guests that, uh, people they've invited into the neighborhood, uh, invite them to, to light off fireworks, they tell them to do it in the street. But really, you're not any less culpable for what is being done to your neighbors. And now you, uh, you've also introduced the possibility that you'll be obstructing traffic, or worst case, someone gets hit by a car. So if someone like a neighborhood, a neighbor or one of the other partygoers can testify that people were coming off and on the property to go into the street, light off fireworks, go back, or if the officer, uh, comes up to the property and can see a, a big bag of fireworks sitting on the property, it's pretty clear that the property is being used as a staging ground for lighting up the fireworks in the street. And that's a violation of this ordinance. Again, this gives the host the choice of, uh, the people lighting the fireworks will be, will bear the responsibility for this, or they can. Now, the third part of our ordinance, uh, if a property owner or the renter who has guests allows, uh, their guests to go into the street to light off fireworks, it imposes a duty on, uh, the person whose property it is to make sure the, the debris and the fireworks are cleaned up out of the street. And if they don't do it, they're potentially looking at getting another infraction. Now, it wouldn't be fair to, uh, impose these duties onto a, a property owner or renter who, uh, doesn't know that the fireworks activity is going on, they, they're not allowing it to happen. But, uh, our ordinance creates presumption that allows, uh, an officer or the judge to assume that if, uh, if the host is on the property and lots of fireworks are going off, they probably knew it was going on and they were allowing it to happen. And, uh, the ordinance also provides a defense, uh, for property owners, renters, who, uh, if they take appropriate steps, uh, to deal with someone who's been firing off fireworks on their property without their permission, and that is, uh, to eject them from your property and help Des Moines PD, uh, hold the person responsible. This is, in addition to the power, uh, police and the prosecutor already have to exercise their discretion to excuse someone who is actually asked, uh, trying to act in good faith to, uh, comply with our, our city laws. So, at heart, I think this draft ordinance is about being a good neighbor. Just remember what the cost to the neighborhood are for inviting people to your home to light illegal fireworks. It's triggering the PTSD of the veteran or the refugee family next door. It's the people across the street having to deal with their, their dog freaking out or, you know, not coming out from under the bed. It's the risk of a brush fire or your neighbor's roof catching on fire. The draft ordinance is a tool to help the police department enforce our firework ban. But it's also an opportunity for this council to make it clear that enabling this kind of disruptive neighbor, uh, sorry, this disruptive na- behavior in your neighborhood, it's not acceptable. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Can I just add something real quick, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so the council's aware, prior to 2012, um, lighting off fireworks in Des Moines was a misdemeanor, which means that you, you would be arrested for it. And actually, that created another kind of obstacle for officers because now you're actually booking someone or you're having to find probable cause to make an arrest. It's a whole process. And so that, that was kind of a barrier to enforcement. And so what we did then, what the council did, was changed it from a misdemeanor to an infraction. So it lessened the penalty, but it allowed officers to act quicker so they could write the ticket and leave. And so this is, this is kind of more in that vein of how do we make it easier for officers to enforce something, get a message across and leave? Because Fourth of July, all those nights, they're, they're very busy. Last thing our officers want to do is go out and write tickets. They just want to go out and say, hey, if we come back here again, we're going to write the property owner. That's, that's really what the message of this is.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we'll go with Councilmember Oxiger, then Councilmember Nutting, and then Councilmember Harris.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm, uh, yeah, for questions.
Yes, uh, I, the last statement, uh, with regard to, uh, warnings. Do we, do we categor- or, uh, compile warnings?
What do you mean by that?
Well.
Like, do we offer a warning?
Well, if, if an officer comes out and offers a warning, is there somehow that that is recorded?
I, I believe that they would do something with dispatcher. They'd be dispatched to the house and probably log that they were there, something to that effect.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm, uh, seeing as possible concern here is that, um, say we have a, uh, situation where we have people who are letting off fireworks for any time a sports event takes place. And so somebody comes out, they get a warning, they stop. But then the next sports event comes up and it's like, okay, I have a, I have a free warning here before I actually have to do anything. Is there, is there any way that we are compiling the number of warnings so that if it's like, okay, you've been warned three times now, and it may be over the course of a certain period of time? But it's like, it's obvious that there's, someone's, you know, gaming the system by just saying, "I've got one free warning." Is there any way that we're able to track that?
I, I think, uh, there is likely a way PD can flag that sort of thing. And if they're not already doing that, um, I'm sure they'll start doing that.
And we have, I mean, we have a small department. The sergeants are always meeting, they have daily briefing. So, um, you know, that would be something that would presumably come up.
Okay, but I, and?
Yeah, but yes, we can talk to the chief about making sure that they make note of those warnings.
Okay, I, I'm wondering if there's some way in the system that if, uh, you know, an officer come, you know, comes on a scene where it's happening, I mean, is it, is this, if this stays in the system, that comes up with the address that, yes, we've had these warnings before?
Yeah, so that wouldn't do anything with this ordinance, but yes, we can check into that as far as operational. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
I, I didn't have any questions.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Oxiger, we do code these calls for service. Um, I don't know how easy they are to retrieve, but, um, I, I have like, uh, thank you, Public Records Officer, I've got like a list of 10 years of them just because I was trying to, um, get a handle on this. It's a question of, you know, can the officer at the scene, you know, hit the button on the computer and see? I, I, I'm assuming what you're saying, um, I'm, I'm about 99% sure that there are a small number of people who just go to town every year, and if we could track them. Anyway, um, so, uh, regarding the draft ordinance, um, I'm, uh, I'm curious about the word "or." So if you, um, does this mean, uh, you know, in the emails this week, does this mean that we can issue a ticket to the owner of the property, even if it's being rented, if they can't be, um, located? In other words, if the renter denies, you know, I, you know, "I wasn't there, it wasn't me," the emoji, can we simply, uh, issue a ticket to the owner of the property?
Yeah, unless we have reason to believe the owner knew it was going on and allowed it to happen, it's probably not something we could do. So you, you did, you did ask an email about, uh, if the renter just disregards the ticket, rips it up and throws it away. I would just like to clarify that the renter still has the consequences of that. They, they will have a judgment in our court with additional fines for, for defaulting, uh, and it will be sent to collection. So they may not want to face it, but, uh, there are still consequences.
So taking a left turn on this, it, I'm not saying for tonight, but would it be possible to make it a requirement for having a rental that the, uh, renter, you know, sign an agreement that, um, they understand this ordinance and that they could be held responsible for fireworks?
So, yeah, that's something that you and I have talked about, about having, uh, an, an agreement with people that rent their homes as far as registering them, right, so we can contact them?
You bet.
Yeah, and so that is, that's something that we would like to address in a different, um, avenue. But this could be something that we could integrate with that when we do.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking in terms of just, you know, as, as the business license, you're able to put in language certain requirements for obtaining the license and maybe just saying, you know, "I acknowledge that I have read the, uh, Des Moines Ordinance on Fireworks, and I know that, you know, um, I could be held responsible." The renter meaning, you know, "I could be held responsible for this." I, I just, I'm thinking about people saying, "Well, I didn't know that," or, you know, and any of that kind of stuff, so.
So that's something we could consider down the road.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, I'm just, and I'm not all about writing tickets, but I just noticed there are like 70, 75 of these every year. And maybe if we did write a few tickets, it would like have a deterrent effect, so, um, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, the, the old adage that ignorance of the law is no excuse still applies. So whether the renter has read the law or not, doesn't really matter if they've got control of the property and are permitting it to happen there. Isn't that the way this reads?
Yes.
Okay. And this is based upon ordinances in other cities, correct?
Yes.
And has it worked well in other cities and they've sort of worked the kinks out of it?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty refined ordinance. So I think other cities did a good job, and Matt really did a good job putting it together and presenting it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so that'll be on the consent calendar a little bit later tonight. So while we're on the topic of fireworks, um, I want to talk about Fourth of July where the city used to light our fireworks off every year. Um, we have an exemption in the code that allows us to light off fireworks. But we've stopped doing that. Um, so last year, we had our first year where we did a drone show. Uh, and I, I, we've heard a lot of positive comments on that. I think we heard some comments, you know, that it wasn't, wasn't quite as cool as the fireworks, right? Um, and, you know, it's different, it's new, and it's, it, it's kind of a growing technology. Um, it's going to get better every year. It's going to get, you know, more advanced, even from, you know, from the videos we were watching of the company that we, we contracted with, what they were showing us they could do versus what they actually did. I mean, in that time, they really moved along. And so our plan for this year is to do the drone show again, um, on the Fourth of July, as well as a number of other events that day, um, kids' events, um, adults' events, have some music, really have a, a, a good event on the Fourth of July. Um, one comment I wanted to make about the drones is not only is there less noise, obviously, but when we'd light those fireworks off, we'd light them off over the sound and they would all just fall right back down in the water. Um, and so that's really something that, um, you know, by moving to this new technology, we're still putting on a show, we're, we're still having an event, but we're eliminating just a lot of pollution that was completely unnecessary. Um, so that's a good thing. So the, the reason why I'm talking about this tonight is that we are, we are working on a contract with the same vendor to provide a show. Um, the contract is for the same amount as last year, uh, but because the technology has improved, we're looking at a, a better show, essentially. We're going to get increased technology, um, and all that stuff for the same price, um, as we did last year. So we are working on executing those contracts now. The issue is that, um, the funding for those, for that event comes from our lodging tax. And so the process of getting those funds, first, we have to apply to our lodging tax committee, get the approval, then bring it back to council, get the approval. At this point, if we don't execute these contracts now, our vendor's going to go somewhere else for Fourth of July. So what I'm informing the council is that I'm going to be, uh, signing these contracts with the intent of moving all of this work through and then coming back to the council for approval. Um, so just wanted to put that out there and ask if there's any serious council concern about this process moving forward, or if I should continue through this process as we had planned.
Councilmember Harris?
So, not to be a buzzkill, but actually, C-Tech, um, they just approved a drone show. And their vendor offers twice the number of drones we did last year for $40,000. So all I would ask you, you know, in the budgetary kind of a thing, is that you maybe call Carl or whatever and just find out what, you know, they're doing, just to find out if they're equivalent. I'm not saying that the company we're using isn't fabulous, but maybe the technology is improving or there's an opportunity to have a little healthy competition. That's it.
Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Thank you. I'm wondering, uh, my presumption is that that contract exceeds the budgetary authority that you have. And so would you need a council vote for us to, uh, waive that, uh, limit?
Um, no, uh, well, one, in order to spend lodging tax funds, they have to be approved by the committee and then by the council. So even if this contract were for $5,000, I would still need the council approval. And so what I'm asking tonight is if there's any serious concern, we still will be bringing that contract back to the council for approval. I just don't want to bring it back to you and four of you say, "We didn't want to do this." And so, you know, that's what I'm, the, the contract is going to come back to you for approval, regardless of the amount. But yes, it does exceed the city manager authority.
And when, how, when do you think the, the timing of that might be in terms of when the committee has a chance to review the proposal, approve it, and come back to us?
So we just received a lot, it, there's, there has to be an application. So I think I received the application today. Um, and so then the next piece will be arranging a meeting with the committee. Um, the committee has been very supportive of this event in the past, so I don't, I don't believe that there'll be an issue. And then just one thing to remind the council, um, lodging tax funds are limited for certain purposes. So when we're talking about general fund issues and, you know, increasing public safety, these funds can't be used for any of that. Um, it has to be used for specific purposes related to promoting Des Moines and tourism and that kind of thing. Um, and so this big kind of festival event where we're doing something innovative and we're bringing people to town, that's, that's exactly what these funds are intended for, so.
Something that the VRBO or Airbnb currently doesn't pay into?
We actually do collect from some of those. And that's, that's really just on them, that the companies, um, they do their own research because we don't have any registration requirements. So they actually, we collect, uh, not a very big amount, but a couple thousand dollars every year from each of those companies.
Thank you, I appreciate the extra information.
Any other questions? All right.
Great, I have one final item tonight.
Oh, did you need a head nod?
I think I got it without any, anyone yelling at me there. Thank you.
All right.
Um, I would ask our Assistant City Manager to come to the podium, and she is going to provide us with an update on the city manager recruitment process.
Good evening, council, members of the community and staff. Uh, my name is A.J. Johnson Newton, and I am the Assistant City Manager at the City of Des Moines. So I am here to give you a brief update on where we are at regarding our search for the next, um, city manager. Some of this might be repetitive. Councilmember Steinmetz stole some of my thunder, but that's okay. See, see if I can follow your act. So if you guys recall, we voted, or the council voted, excuse me, on March fourteenth to retain SGR as our recruitment search form firm. So since then, we have executed the agreement. So we have our contract signed. We've I we've had a brief meeting with the president of SGR and our assigned recruiter, Dave Tuan. And that really was just more of a meet and greet, so it wasn't anything really in-depth, just some questions about the agreement and just general questions about the city. From that meeting, what I did discover is that there are going to be some decisions that will need to be made by the council and some homework for you guys before we actually put you in front of the consultant. So next week, tune in. The council will be rolling up their sleeves, and they'll have some decisions to make. So we are hoping to get the consultant in front of the council, maybe about mid-April. As Councilmember Steinmetz mentioned, we wanted to take advantage of the Citizens Advisory Committee time, timing for the meeting. So last night, we had Dave Tuan come in and just give a brief overview of the process. And I do want to compliment the committee. I thought they provided very meaningful and insightful feedback. And so that feedback, I have received it back, it's compiled, and the council will receive that pretty soon. So thank you for that. And then, um, that's really it. Basically, I'll see you next week, same time, same place. And we will look forward to working with the councils as we continue to start this process. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, A.J. Have anything else?
And that concludes my report, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our consent. So if the city clerk could read the consent calendar, please.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Item three, citizens advisory appointments. Item four, permitting illegal fireworks infraction. And that concludes the consent agenda, mayor.
Thank you. Is there, uh, do I have a motion, first of all? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve. The consent agenda is read. Second.
Second by Councilmember Mahoney. Thank you. Is there an item that any of the any council member wishes to pull? No? Okay. Well, take a vote then, all in favor, as read. Unanimous, seven zero. Thank you. And I have a proclamation to read, so. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread, it impacts every person in every community. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month aims to raise public awareness about sexual abuse, harassment, and assault, and educate communities about how to be involved in prevention. And whereas this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign theme, Building Connected Communities, calls on each of us to work together to prevent sexual abuse, harassment, and assault. We believe when anyone experiences sexual violence, every community member is affected. We must strive to build more connected, respectful, and inclusive communities to promote our collective well-being and protect against the risk of sexual violence. And whereas, we believe all of our communities will be safer and stronger by making them more equitable for people of all gender identities and sexual orientations, races and ethnic ethnic backgrounds, ages, faiths, and abilities. And whereas, we must strive to create strong, connected communities that take care of one another and make decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of others and end sexual violence. And whereas, the Building Connected Communities campaign is an opportunity for our community to join with others around the world in committing in committing to prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Now, therefore, the Des Moines Council hereby proclaims the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The City of Des Moines joins advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Signed this twenty-eighth day of March, 2024. Tracy Buxton, mayor. Okay. And I think that takes us to unfinished business. First item on the unfinished business, we have 2024 Annual Budget Amendments. These are enterprise fund adjustments. The purpose of this item is for the city council to consider draft ordinance 24-012, Amending the 2024 Annual Budget. And we have a presentation by Finance Director Jeff Friend. Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, good evening, mayor, and good evening, council, members of the public. This is a budget amendment for the 2024 Annual Budget. Sometimes budget amendments are referred to as housekeeping. This is that in its purest form, probably. We have some numbers to move from one fund to another pursuant to other actions the council took at the end of last year. So at the end of last year, the 2024 Annual Budget was adopted, and in the budget was a new enterprise fund for events and facility rentals and an inter-fund loan from the Surface Water Management Fund to that new fund. The budget was adopted, ordinances, creating these, the loan and the new fund were also passed. A month later, they were repealed. However, we still had the numbers in the wrong spot on the budget afterwards. And so this budget amendment would fix that. And fixing that is important, and why we're doing it right now is for financial reporting reasons. The actual transactions are being recorded in the general fund, and we need to move the budget numbers over to the general fund so they can match, and our reports will make sense. So this is the budget amendment, removing the inter-fund loan and the enterprise fund budget. So you can see where you have that the bottom section for the Surface Water Management Fund, the reduction in expenditures there is that inter-fund loan of seven hundred and fifty thousand. And you can see above in what was to be Fund 420, the reduction of that revenue. So that's just unwinding that loan. And then the other amounts there for the salaries and benefits, supplies, services, and the revenue from the rentals and events are also being reduced. So Fund 420 would be taken down to zero, and it would not exist. And the inter-fund loan would not exist as well. As far as the impact on the general fund, revenues would be increased four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And the expenditures would also be increased by the salaries and benefits, supplies and services. That equals nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, a little over that. And in regards to these numbers, these are not the exact same budget amounts that we backed out of the other fund. What we did is I met with the staff running the events and facility rentals and reviewed what they thought the accurate number should be. They're not significantly different. There was some increases in rental revenues, like for the fieldhouse and activity center, they thought should be a little bit higher. We decreased office supply expense and small equipment expense on the expenditure side. So it was an improvement of about sixty thousand dollars, not significantly different. But that's what that's why these numbers aren't exactly the same as the ones that we backed out of the other fund. And then this is the motion, if you know any pass for the draft ordinance number 24-012.
Thank you. Great. Before we take a motion, do we have any questions for the Finance Director? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Jeff, thanks for cleaning this up. I mean, it's it's appreciated. Can you remind us a little bit of the six hundred and ten thousand in salaries and benefits? What positions are those?
That is, there is, I'm trying to remember the title because the department's changed names. Director of, I think it's Events and Community Services, that's a point seven five of her FTE, that's Nicole Nordholm. Then there are two positions, at least underneath of that, which is, I'm just trying to, I know the people's names, yeah.
We don't need names, but Bonnie can come up and give titles. Thank you. Yeah.
I'll answer that. Director of Events and Facilities is Nicole Nordholm. Courtney Wilt is the Events and Facilities Manager. And then Rob Thomas is the Events and Facilities Coordinator. Thank you.
And are those a percentage of those individuals' salaries or FTE? Or how does, that's what I'm asking.
They're all full FTEs, except Nicole is point seven five FTE to that program.
And then on the on the services, three hundred and ten, three hundred and twelve thousand, what what services are those that are being provided in Events and Facilities that we're paying for?
Well, I know there's the, off the top of my head, there's laundry services for linens. A lot of the costs are fixed costs. There's insurance, there's utilities. There's, I think there was, um, there's IT maintenance costs. So there's a lot of internal indirect costs, but also, you know, like utility charges. So there's those kinds of things. There's probably some cleaning costs, professional services, advertising, those kinds of things.
I guess, why aren't those costs included in the revenue coming in from the facility rentals? Why isn't that captured by the facility rental?
So why is the revenue not capturing all of the costs? Is that the question?
Essentially.
Well, I think that relates to the rates that are being charged. I think when we first had the discussion, and I think also what we've learned since is that there was an ordinance, or at least a resolution, from about 2015 that established that certain groups could get seventy-five percent discounts for a weekend rental at the beach park. So I think rate structure is one of the areas that we'd have to review. Secondly, I'd say probably the number of facilities that are being rented, I think that's one of the goals that they had, is to rent more facilities to increase the revenue. So the revenue number is low in the budget. Hopefully, they can do better than that. I would say also that, you know, leadership is taking, is looking at how they're doing the first two months of the year. So I guess that would be how I'd answer that question.
Okay, and are we going to be seeing a rate structure, rate restructuring, or at least set the rates by by market rate? Or is something like that forthcoming to adjust that? Because.
It was my understanding that that or resolution I mentioned with the rates was going to be brought to council at some point. Bonnie might have more information as she runs the program and the department. But that was my understanding at this point.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're in March right now. So yes, we're working on all that. Obviously, I mean, we've had issues with the Founder's Lodge that were updated, the Senior Center with the pipe burst. I mean, so those were two facilities that we intended on renting. I I think I reported last week that, at least at the Senior Center, we can, we've applied for some reimbursement from that emergency declaration that might help us recover what we had lost in in rentals from that site. So there's still, it's still a work in progress, and 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 we're we're working towards a goal of revenue neutral. And, you know, we're we're working, and and we'll keep the council updated as we do.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact ordinance number 24-012 relating to the municipal finance amending to the 2024 Annual Budget, adopted in ordinance number 1779.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Right, looks like it's seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have a bi- biennial budgeting discussion. This is our second reading. The purpose of this item is for the city council to consider draft ordinance 24-016, Adopting a Biennial Budget Process. Staff Presentation, Finance Director Jeff Friend.
Okay. I had to take a breath in between presentations tonight. So this presentation is on biennial budgeting. As was mentioned, it is the second reading. So budgeting in Washington State. In Washington State, government entities can have two ways that they can budget. The default is annual budgeting, where you do the entire budget cycle every year on an annual basis. But in nineteen eighty-five, the legislature adopted the Municipal Biennial Budget Act, which allowed cities to choose between annual budgeting or budgeting for two years at a time. The annual budget cycle is a default. But if a municipality chooses to buy ordinance, they can choose to budget two years at a time in biennial budgeting. Cities can change to a biennial cycle through issuing an ordinance. The ordinance must be passed six months before beginning of the biennium. And a biennium is required by law to start with an odd numbered year. So that's why we're coming to council with this now, because we actually happen to be in that timeframe where a biennium would be 2025 and 2026. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to come after June thirtieth. So that's, we're in the timeframe right now where we are able to come and give council the opportunity to consider biennial budgeting. And biennial budgeting is a common practice for cities in Washington State. So in the packet, I believe there's a list of neighboring cities nearby that do biennial budgeting. The point, as I had previously said a few times, isn't to say that we need to do what everybody else is doing. But it's just to say, it's not some weird uncommon uncommon thing that's going on or option. You know, there's there are cities that do annual, there are cities that do biennial. Okay, in the first reading, I think Councilmember Mahoney asked that for this reading, we can go through a budget cycle and demonstrate all the times that, you know, all the points where the council is in touch. Basically, what I thought we could do is, last time, we went through what an annual budget cycle looked like. And this would be, if we were to adopt a biennial budget, this would be what the schedule would look like. This is actually from our budget calendar. I don't want to read a lot of dates and bore everybody with numbers. But we will, I'll try to be concise here. So each column, you have the major steps in the process. And then the three columns on the right, you have the city manager management team, committee meetings, and then city council. So if the step in the process involves one of or more of those columns or groups, then there's a date, a date recorded under that column. So preliminary discussions, you can see, start with the CIP. So there's two pieces of the budget cycle. There's the the CIP plan, and that's the capital improvement plan and the budget. So we we get an early start on the CIP. And this year, we're hoping to get it into committee meetings in July and August. Last year, that didn't happen. It just came to council directly without any further examination by council. But this year, our goal is to get it into committees so that there's some more familiarity with the plan than there was last year. CIP presented to council. Our goal is to get that to city council, to the meeting in September, by September twelfth. Okay, reviewing financial and budget policies and would be begin in May. Determining and discussing budget assumptions would occur in June. We'd look at economic data trends and comparisons in June. Use that when we get like our inflation numbers, that kind of thing. Update indirect cost allocation plan. So there's, I had mentioned in with the budget amendment that there's indirect costs. So we have funds, let's say, that handle the fleets, that purchase IT equipment, and they bill the general fund, they bill like the marina. But those, that, that's, we have a model that has to be worked on that takes into a lot of different criteria to determine what those costs are. And then from June fifteenth to July fifteenth this year, that should say 2024, we're going to develop the baseline budget. So that's when the departments submit their request for their budgets for the upcoming, in this case, biennium. Once that's done, there's department meetings with city manager. That is usually would be between with myself, the city manager, possibly the city assistant city manager, and then the department heads. In August, we have an initial five-year forecast. Also in August, we have the decisions, now that all the meetings have happened, of are we, what do we have to scrub? What do our revenue numbers look like? So you're you're budgeting. So you're, you're budgeting, you're balancing the budget essentially as best you can. Develop PowerPoint with city manager and directors. And so once we get through that and we kind of figure out, okay, this is where we're at, this is what's happening, this is the environment we're in, then we're starting to get to the point where the numbers are down and we're ready to start presenting a budget message to council. So that's what this, developing a PowerPoint is, and we prepare for the budget retreat. So the budget retreat this year, we're planning for September fifth of twenty twenty-four. So that kind of takes us up into September. Then continuing this year in twenty twenty-four, we're also preparing the preliminary budget. So we're putting the budget book together. And then by October first, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six preliminary biennial budget would be put together. October first is the state mandated deadline in order to submit your budget to the city clerk. So once that's done, then again, we continue presenting the budget. So this would be presenting a biennial budget. You can see all the different pieces. The, the retreat would be September fifth, as I said. And then public hearing for the first reading of the biennial budget would be October twenty-fourth. Then public hearing and adoption for the property tax levy and would be November fourteenth. The second reading of the budget and any twenty twenty-four budget amendments would be also November, November fourteenth. Those three typically go all together in the same evening. So that would be the first year of the budget cycle. It's very much the same or identical to what we have now. So what would we be doing in twenty twenty-five if we had a biennial budget cycle? So this is the same sched, type of schedule. So in, we have a preliminary discussion again. The CIP plan is, the process would still remain the same from year to year. So we'd still be updating the CIP plan annually. So that's still the committee meetings, July through August. And then we present it to council on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. We'd update again the indirect cost allocation plan by July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So you're going to say, this sounds a little familiar because there's still pieces that we would still do annually. We do determine and discuss budget assumptions in August. So that's happening a little bit later in the year, but we would have also more information in August than we do like in the first year when we're doing it in May. Economic data, again, we're looking at August twenty twenty-five. And then in August, also, we'd call on departments to provide mid biennium, mid biennium adjustments. So they would be reviewing their budget in the mid biennium. And then any adjustments that they'd want, they would request. It doesn't mean they'd be approved, but they would be requested. Then we have a five-year forecast done September first. Mid biennium adjustment requests due to finance in September, September fifteenth. And then there'd be reviewed the last half of September. Then on October second, twenty twenty-five, budget adjustment update presented to the finance committee. And then the first public hearing of the budget amendment adjustments for twenty-five, twenty-six would be October twenty-third of next year. And then second public hearing would be on November sixth, twenty twenty-five. Advantages to biennial budgeting. Firstly, it encourages a long-term planning focus. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about long-term planning after discussing the advantages and disadvantages. But it encourages a long-term planning focus over multiple years instead of just balancing the budget for a single year. And then reducing the total amount of time spent budgeting over a two-year period and freeing up time for other projects in year two. In year two, all city departments would benefit from time savings. And the third would be budgets could less, be less politicized as the budgets would only be adopted in non-election years. So as I had mentioned before, it's really the first two advantages that we're really, in finance, would be excited about, which is the long-term planning focus because directors would look beyond just one year. And then reducing the total amount of time spent budgeting, that would benefit all departments because they wouldn't have to start from scratch every single year. Disadvantages to biennial budgeting. More time and effort to develop the budget in year one. So if we were to have a biennial budget, we would have a bit more work to do this year, not as much work next year. A perceived loss of control by the legislative body since they are approving the budget for two years at a time. We have a finance committee now. And as I showed in the schedule previous to this, council is always in control of the budget and always being informed during the budget cycle. More difficulty and understand, and uncertainty forecasting revenues and expenditures further into the future. So in twenty twenty-four, we do a five-year forecast. We would be updating that in year two. But the point of this disadvantage would be, or as calling this a disadvantage is it's difficult to, to be in twenty twenty-four and know it's happening in twenty twenty-six. But as, as I said in the schedule, you know, we'd still be working on forecasts. And in year two, we'd actually have more time to work on those forecasts as well because we wouldn't be scrambling, putting the whole budget together. Some jurisdictions spending too much time on budget amendments or the mid biennium review and adjustment eliminating any time savings in year two. This, I would address this one as just planning. So if you plan your time well, then you won't be spending as much time on adjustments as you would on an entire budget. And long-term financial planning. So in the first reading, we had a public comment with very insightful comments about long-term financial planning. And I also answered a question for Deputy Mayor Steinmetz that I wanted to clarify because I thought about it afterwards and thought I didn't answer it as well as I could have. So the question, the response I gave in the last reading was along the lines of the budget is our financial plan, and that's true. And there are elements in the budget cycle that we have with the CIP being six years and doing a five-year forecast that have long-term elements, and that is our only financial plan. But we don't have an actual long-term financial plan that goes to council periodically for review that incorporates all of their strategic, you know, strategic thoughts and priorities, et cetera. So I had mentioned, I think, when we were discussing efficiencies for departments around the city, you know, I think I mentioned like police will have more time to work on public safety and public works will have more time for capital projects. But I didn't think about my own department because I usually think people aren't that interested in what our department's doing. But what would finance be able to do in, with gained efficiency? And I would, was thinking along the lines of developing a long-term financial plan. And furthermore, I think that that would probably be appropriate for the finance committee to discuss. And so what this slide does is it talks about the cycle of long-term planning, how that incorporates goals and priorities, and that, how that goes into the balanced budget. So you see the box at the top says you establish goals and priorities. So you seek in, public input and specify objectives. So the first one, seek public input, is something that we're going to try to do this year. When I presented the budget to the Citizen Advisory Committee last year, there was a woman who said, well, no one's ever asked me what I think. And I said, well, we will next year. That's a goal of ours. And so I, I said that out loud in public. So that kind of bound me to that. It's, I am thinking about it. We're going to work on it. The issue is, if you seek public, if we seek public input, what are we going to do with it? Are we going to put a survey out and then do nothing? So it's got, there needs to be a value to that and where at least the public, the public feels that they're heard and that, that their input is incorporated into the priorities of the budget. Then develop a long-term financial plan. So that characteristics under there is review, update fiscal policy, revenue and expenditure, final, financial forecast, financial trends, reserve analysis, gap and issue analysis, and debt planning. So debt planning won't be too difficult for us because I don't think we'll be issuing debt anytime soon. But there's elements in there that we do do during the budget process as far as like the forecasting and looking at trends. But our budget we're working on is not, it's a short-term financial plan, is not actually long-term. The Government Financial Office, Finance Officers Association would define long-term plans, they recommend six to ten years. So our CIP would be a long-term plan because it covers six years. So we do some of that, but we don't have an actual plan. I think the city would benefit from an actual plan and having that process. The bottom square, develop balanced budget. So I think that's supported by the principles you have in your long-term financial plan. So you have fiscal sustainability under a balanced budget, all for all funds. You have your capital improvement program, which I've mentioned, and then calculate operating position. And then that feeds into monitoring to budget. So you've established your goals and priorities. You have a long-term financial plan. You've developed the balanced budget. Dang it. And then once you do that, then that's where the financial reporting piece comes in to monitor the budget. You have a quarterly financial report and investment report. So we do some of these things, a number of these things by, I kind of look at this as like, this is really a good target to head for as far as how our processes work and how that can support sustainability for the city. And then we have motions.
Thank you. So before the motion, do you have any questions? Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation and the details on the touchpoints of the, of the, of a budget if it was biennial. I asked this question last time. I'm going to ask you it again. It's like, you've had a chance to assess our finances in the best ways at work. Which prefer, which method do you prefer, the year, year-over-year or the biennial?
I would prefer the biennial.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Yep. Jeff, thank you for answering my question with the whole slide that, about long-term planning. No, I appreciate the work that went into that. If we, if we adopt the biennial budget, are we, and we hire a soon, a new city manager who says, I just don't want to do it that way? Can it be unwound?
Yeah, you can go from biennial to annual if you choose to.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I, I really appreciate the addition of all these dates and touchpoints because I do think that one of the concerns that's been expressed to me is will we stop hearing about money and the budget if we go on to this two-year type of cycle? And I really appreciate having on paper the amount of communication that will still come out. Of course, we've stood up a new budget committee as well where folks can tune into more in-depth conversations about that topic. Can you describe a little bit more? I know that you've discouraged us from amending it over and over and over again. But can you describe, are there any limitations to us needing to make an amendment and coming back to adjust things if needed in that down year, the non-budgeting year? And is that still something that folks can see in action when we need to make adjustments, let's say?
Yeah, the, there's actually a statutory period that allows for those budget adjustments. And that's why they were all on the schedule where they were in September. So I believe it's September through December thirty-first that you have that. So that's, and it would require a public hearing. So, I mean, the, anything with a budget is going to happen in front of the public. And, and that would include also the financial reporting. So if that piece is also happening with quarterly reports, then that shows the monitoring of the budget. And then the adjustments would, they'd be happening pretty much at the same time a regular budget would be being passed anyway. So that, it wouldn't be that much different, I don't think. Does, does that answer the?
Yes, thank you. My second question. I know that folks are probably already looking at what you might be doing in your, in your low budget year, your, your fallow year. But could more public interaction or education about our budgeting system take some of the place of the preparation that you've done in those heavy budget years?
Yeah, I think, you know, I guess my first thought would be maybe, you know, the, the Citizens Advisory Committee would want me to drop by, you know, chat with me about their priorities, how they see things are going. So there's, I think there's different avenues where I can still get input and be visible. That's what my first thoughts would be.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
I didn't think I had a question, but, and I don't mean to blindside you. But do you code or quantify in some way how much staff time goes into the legal budget process? You know, from the second half of the year, basically?
Well, no, we don't have, because we do have coding for like if somebody is, an engineer is working on a capital project.
Right.
But we don't have that for the amount of finance staff or other departments on the budget.
Has anybody ever just sort of, you know, done a cocktail napkin kind of? Because it, it seems like it's an all-hands-on-deck kind of a deal, or that's the vibe that I've gotten, you know, for several months of the year. So, I mean, is there any just person hours?
I know it's a big portion of my hours for those months. And as far as finance, the finance department goes, that I'd probably be the one mainly, except for we do have a staff person who does the CIP. But as far as just the budget, it would be most of my FTE probably three, four months at least. As far as what other department directors spend working on the budget, I, I don't have a way of knowing.
Like you have meetings where they, you know, come to you with their, you know, in order to prep, right?
Those can run, I'd say we'd have like meetings with the city manager, it can be one to two hours probably times the number of departments, which would be seven or eight. So, I mean, you could probably break it down in estimations.
I'm, I'm just, I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one or kind of a, in regard to one of the slides there, it talks about committee meetings, you know, during the budget process, both first and second year. But I'm, and then there was one aligned item talked about the finance committee. But I'm thinking or assuming that the finance committee would really be regularly involved in this budget subjects all year round, correct?
Yeah, I think even on our work plan, we have a budget update and to show them. I was going to actually show them that budget calendar in our meeting next week, but then thought it was a bit redundant to show them tonight and then next week. So the budget is going to be something that we're going to be talking about from meeting to meeting.
And so when the budget chair, the, the finance committee chair reports up, that might be a way to keep, keep the budget in a sense in front of the community all year long, right, every month?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to answer as well. So that was part of, as the chair, that was part of our assistance and cooperation with Mr. Friend here was to have that in front of us on a regular basis to have another additional checkpoint.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number two, four, dash, zero, one, six relating to municipal finance adopting a biennial budgeting cycle beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll go to give that to Councilmember Mahoney on the second. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
So I've gotten, you know, I never got a single letter or note about budgeting in my entire four years. And I got several about this. I was thinking, my cousin was a ship's master and about this tragedy in Baltimore. And there's this funny thing when your craft loses propulsion and you've got anywhere from several minutes, it could be hours depending on the situation, where all you can do is just sit there, smoke a cigarette, but you know what's coming. And I, because I watched the council even before I was elected, you see things sort of heading slowly in a particular direction. And there's like nothing you can do about it. And that goes for the lid lift thing we're going to talk about and various management stuff. I wanted this years ago and I support this because I just have been seeing this general direction. And to the public comment about the budget scrub. And to the public comment about the budget scrub, that has been physically impossible for years. We have not done that kind of thing in a long time. It's politics, it's, you know, you hear about people talk about how scoldy I am and so forth. It's a cultural change, sir. And this is my, my support for this is just a hail mary to try to get that super tanker going in a different direction. And it will take a long time, but I understand the concerns. You have no idea, I had to take a special, I had to take another pill, you know, thinking about tonight. But this is the right thing to do. And I appreciate everyone's concern because it definitely is your money and you've asked all the right questions. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I support the biennial budgeting proposal primarily because it's what the staff wants. Because it's an internal process. It's not really a process that will make the budget any more or less transparent to the public at large. It allows for your planning. And last time we talked about this, you answered quite forthrightly that you thought you did have the tools in place to plan out far enough to forecast the revenues in order to make the biennial budgeting working. Washington State operates on a biennial budget, as you indicated, several cities do. It just, you know, if this is what you need to make this work, I believe this is an internal process. This is not anything that's going to save or change anything about our city because it's only as good as we work it and you work it. And if this is something that helps you work it, I think this is a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Well, I have to agree with, heartily with my colleagues, not to be repetitive, but just to give account for my vote tonight. When we saw red in the forecast last fall, I'm like, Jeff, if you face this, what have you done? Have you been, you know, what are your recommendations? And we're doing that. And he's the expert. He's worked this, this isn't the first city that he's done budgets for. This is what he's been doing for a long time. We got ourselves a great guy here. So this, I'm going with this because these are his ideas. He's the expert and I appreciate what my colleagues have said. So without further ado, let's take a vote. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Mahoney.
Sorry, Mayor, I just have a.
No worries.
I just want you to know, there's particularly Karen and Chuck. I, you know, you voiced your concerns and I really appreciated that. And it was something that I looked through, that filter, when I considered this. I do think, I want to work with Jeff, I want to give him the tools he needs. I do think in the end, it does give us a better view of the long-range piece in the financing. I think it helps us solidify our vision and plan longer range as well. And I think my, a lot of our concerns about checkpoints along the way were met. And I thank Mr. Friend for providing those as well. So I'm going to support it as well. But I just wanted to call out that I really appreciate it and your voices were heard. Thank you.
All right. Last call. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have a 7-0 vote. Good job. Okay. Next up, we have a discussion on the property tax levy lid lift. This is our first reading. And the purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to consider draft ordinance 24-020. It's relating to the approval of placing a ballot measure on a property tax levy lid lift on the ballot in 2024. And we have a staff presentation by none other than, take a breath, drum roll. Finance Director Jeff Friend. Take it away.
Wish I had brought my water bottle with me.
Mine is not opened. Do you want some?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Hey, property tax levy lid lifts. In the last council meeting, we had a discussion just about what property tax levy lid lifts were. The intent of that was purely informational. Since that time, we've been able to dig a little deeper into the numbers that we're looking at as far as what we wanted to fund if a levy lid lift passed. And so this presentation will be a little similar to the last one, still informational, but then a little update on what actually we're looking to do. So property tax levy increases. So taxing districts with a population of 10,000 or more may not increase the total levy amount collected from the current assessed valuation by more than 1% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. So when we adopt a property tax levy, which we do every year, King County sends us basically a form with all of our data. And part of that data is what we collected the year before. And we have the option to increase that 1% depending on what inflation is. If inflation is less, then we have to do a little bit more work to claim a 1% increase because we need to justify it. Or council and administration may decide, you know, this year we don't want 1%. So during the pandemic, we did not take, there was a couple of years where we did not take any 1% increase. Aside from that, there's two ways to increase property tax levies, more than the 1% levy limit. The first is banked capacity. So I had mentioned that we did not take the 1% increase for a couple of years during the pandemic. So whatever that amount would have been that year, the county takes that and they call it banked capacity. So in 2021, we don't take the 1%. Let's say it was $60,000. 2027, we can say, oh, well, we want to take that $60,000 now. And so that's one way we can take, increase it over 1%. And then the other way you can increase property tax levies is with a levy lid lift, which is the topic of this presentation. Somebody got me some water, so, okay. So what is a levy lid lift? A taxing jurisdiction that is collecting less than its maximum statutory levy rate may ask a simple majority of voters to lift the total levy amount collected by more than 1%. The new levy rate cannot exceed the maximum statutory rate. So I think the key pieces here are, I mean, we're talking about a ballot measure. And then the voters will decide, and it just requires a simple majority. And then the new levy rate cannot exceed the maximum statutory rate. For the current tax year, 2024, Des Moines' maximum statutory rate was about $1.84. There are four types of levy lid lifts. So there's two variables that come into play that create these four types. The first being, is it temporary or permanent? So will it expire or will it always stay? Or is it single year or multi-year? And the years, that refers to how many years you can exceed the 1%. So a single year, as we'll see in some graphs, you can exceed the 1% increase one year and then things progress from there. Multi-year, you have up to six years where you can exceed the 1%. So graphically, this is a single-year temporary levy lid lift. So the blue is your normal level of property tax levy. And in that third column, you can see there's a one-time bump that exceeds the 1% annual limit. And that's that little green portion with the arrow pointing to it. And then in the subsequent years, you can see it resumes that 1% annual increase for a number of years specified in the ballot measure. And then being temporary, it expires. And so you see a drop-off after the green disappears on the graph and things return to the normal level of property tax levy. Temporary levy lid lifts are typically used for, if the city wants to build a bridge or has some big capital project they want to finance or fund, then they can say, you know, we can raise, the voters might want to, you know, raise the property tax levy for a limited number of years. And then when the project's done, then it goes back to normal. A multi-year temporary lid lift is similar, except there's an initial bump in that first year that you see in the first green square on the third column. But then it can increase again for the next several years, up to five additional years over the 1%. So this one's temporary, but you can see, you know, that green builds up pretty big and then you have a big cliff there. And again, typically used for a capital project. But I think it was asked, why, who would want to do a temporary one when they have, you know, significant structural issues? And I think the city of Bothell might be the answer to that. They, they're in our situation, but they like to do a temporary thing to give voters a choice every few years, which it was interesting. Single-year, permanent levy lid lift. So this is a permanent situation. You bump up the increase the first year over 1%. And then every year therefore after, you have the 1% annual increase going forward. It does not expire. And then the same with the multi-year permanent levy lid lift. You bump it the first year and then for up to the next five years, you can increase it to varying degrees, which is usually specified in your ballot measure, in your ordinance. And then after those six years, then you go back to the 1%. So that one, it really grows. Our recommendation is actually for the single-year permanent levy lid lift. Because we felt that, first of all, it was a simpler message to the voters. And then it kind of, we felt that it gave us the increase we needed. And then it just seemed like, if we accomplish that the first year, then we wouldn't need to have to have voters or residents or citizens worry about those subsequent years about what was going to happen. Why a levy lid lift? So the Municipal Research and Services Center has this quote that 101% limit obviously restricts revenue growth, especially for jurisdictions that are heavily dependent on property taxes and whose costs are increasing more than 1% per year due to inflation, salary and benefits costs, and other factors. And those last few characteristics describe us pretty well. In fact, that whole quote does. Property tax is Des Moines' largest revenue source. So it's our top revenue source and it's growing at 1% while our expenditures are increasing in 2022, 6%, and then 2023, 13%. So I think the economic situation and climate that we're experiencing is what all cities are experiencing. I think Seattle had a hiring freeze. And when I read the article in the Seattle Times, it's like you could, you know, you read those articles and you can switch out whatever city's name and it would probably apply to them. So I think, I read them, I think, that sounds very familiar. Which option is best? It depends on how much money the taxing district needs to raise, what the revenue is needed for, and for how long, how quickly the taxing district's costs and property values are increasing, the desired election date, and how it's perceived that voters will respond to the different alternatives, for instance, a permanent versus temporary tax. So proposed uses, so this is in the packet. And I do want to say that this, this is what staff has in mind. But when the ballot measure is written, it's not going to have anything specific like this in the language. Because the language for the ballot measures are general. It would limit it to have language about public safety and retaining service levels and adding, increasing service levels. But what we're looking at is an additional four patrol officers, which would be one additional officer for each of the patrol teams. And an officer on average costs about $215,000, but four would be $860,000. We want to retain the two officer positions, the two patrol officers that are funded with the American Rescue Plan Act. Because those funds will be exhausted by the end of this year. So there's two of them, so that's $430,000. We have an ARPA crisis response specialist. So we have a, she's funded by the same grant from the federal government. And that would be about $135,000. And these amounts for the officers include training, equipment, benefits, and salary. We want to retain the limited-term crime analyst, which is $120,000. Police vehicle replacement, $600,000. Also with additional police, additional arrests, you have other related costs that increase. So there would be a half FTE for new paralegal in the legal department, which would be $70,000. Score jail cost increase, I believe in the packet, that's discussed, that we budgeted about $750,000 to pay our fees to score this year. That was based on some assurances. That did not come to fruition. So we'll be actually paying more than that. And if we increase our usage of the jail, we have to count for that as well. So that's, would be about $400,000 annually. And then additional court staff, they probably need an additional court clerk or two, and then a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's how we would arrive at the 2.815 million dollar figure. Impact on property tax revenue. So if we want to be in that neighborhood, again, we'd be looking at $1.35 per thousand. Currently, we're at about 90 cents per thousand. So there's $1.35 and also $1.40. And so the number did change from the last presentation to $1.40. Because again, we're not guaranteed a certain return just because we choose a rate. It's heavily dependent on what assessed valuation is, which can fluctuate. And we just figured, you know, $1.40 was probably a bit safer bet than $1.35, though probably not too significantly different. Impact to the property taxpayer. So this would be showing what's being paid this year in the 2024 property tax levy, which was the 90 cent rate based on property values, the proposed $1.40 rate, and how much that increase is based on the property value. So if your property is worth $400,000, that would be a $199 increase. If you had a million-dollar property value, the increase would be $497 annually. And then if your property value was $1.6 million, it would be an increase of $796 per year based on if that's, we had a levy similar, or an assessed valuation similar to what we had for 2024. The median property value in the city is $521,000. So exemptions. It was noted that in our packet, we did leave out the language on the exemptions for senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and disabled veterans. That wasn't intentional, it was just an oversight. I think everybody is supportive of that language. In addition to that, the King County assessor is scheduled to be here next week to actually talk about this program. He probably knows a little bit more about it than I do. But this is a general description of that program. So state law provides a tax benefit program for senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and disabled veterans. Under the exemption program, the value of a residence is frozen for property tax purposes and you can become exempt from all excess in special levies and possible regular levies resulting in a reduction of your property taxes. So to qualify for this program, your annual household income is less than $84,000. So that's not necessarily individual, but that's your household income. You own and occupy property as principal residence for over six months per year and are over the age of 61, disabled, or a veteran with at least an 80% total VA disability rating. So that's kind of a description of the program. I don't really know the particulars probably as well as the assessor does. So I'm kind of learning as well. But we wanted to acknowledge that this language would be in the ballot measure and is important to us and highly relevant. Pro and con committees. So part of the process, if there was to be a ballot measure, is that the city needs to set up or appoint members of a pro committee and a con committee. So those committees are the ones that write for the voter's pamphlet, the pro position and the con position. So these committees consist of up to three members. They must be appointed no later They must be appointed no later than the resolution filing deadline, which, if we were to do the August primary election, which is our recommendation, would be May 3rd. So if it was May 3rd, appointments could be made on April 28th. In fact, actually 25th, because I got that date wrong. 25th is the Thursday. Must be individuals who are known to favor or oppose the ballot measure. And if no appointment is made, the county auditor shall, whenever possible, make the appointments. So a seminar I went to, the Pacifica Law Group highly encouraged you to find volunteers, because it's just a better process than having to leave it up to the county, who's not as familiar with the community. So our recommendation is a permanent levy lid lift, single-year, a levy rate of $1.40, and putting it on the ballot in the August election. And then this would, of course, go to a second reading if this motion were to pass.
Do you have any questions before the motion? I'll go with Councilmember Mahoney and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Can you go back to the slide before this? So my question to you was, before, on the last meeting, we made the recommendation of permanent levy lift for multi-year. Why did that change?
I think we, we had internal discussions on probably, on what was best for the ballot and the voters. And so that's why we thought, we just thought, single-year was a simpler message.
You're saying it's easier to sell?
Yes.
Versus
Multi-year.
A choice that might be best to adjust to inflation? Or the possibility of, of the things we can't predict?
Well, yeah, I can answer that, because I was involved in those conversations. So the single-year is a set rate, and it happens one time, right? And so when, when our residents are looking at it, they see that, they see that it's one time, and it provides more certainty. When you add that multi-year, we had some conversations about, you know, kind of the uncertainty of what that means when you're voting for that, and what impact that might have on whether or not it will pass. And then we were looking at really what that multi-year, what, how much funds that was raising over what this would have done, and it really wasn't that much. And so I think if there was a, if there was a risk of this not passing, because we're trying to seek a little bit extra in the out-years, it wouldn't be worth it. Whereas, the certainty of providing how much in one year, you know, might increase the percentage of passing. But ultimately, that's a council decision.
So, so it looks like a little bit of a trade for the changing to the single-year, the levy rate was raised to 1.40 to make the number.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Jeff, I don't know if you know it, but I don't see on the, on the slide at least, that the appointment of the pro and con committees, who makes those appointments? Is that council action? Is that a city manager action?
It's the council.
It's the council.
Yeah. So even tonight, if someone is interested in being on one of those committees, they can contact the city clerk after the meeting. But we will be putting out information on social media and on our website, because we need people to be on these committees, pro and con. And so we will be putting that out. We would get the applications, and then we'll bring those forward on April 25th council meeting for the council to make the appointments.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Again, I don't want to blindside, but I just, I, it's at the appropriate point. I want to offer an amendment, and I just want to run by if this is legally kosher. I, I would like these...
You can't be amended?
No.
He's making a recommendation.
I'm asking a question.
What's your point of order, sir?
Point of order is, is this not appropriate at the time? There is no motion on the floor, so it cannot be amended.
I'm, I'm not making, I'm not making an amendment, I'm asking for a legal opinion of the city attorney, if possible. If, if not, I can take it offline, but I think it's more appropriate, it's more transparent just to tell the public what I have in mind.
You're asking for a question?
Well, I was, I was trying to.
Okay, deputy, so, okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Thanks. So, I'm sorry, the thing, the thing, screensaver. Okay, so if we could look at the actual language of the proposition, the, let's see here, where it says, "For the purpose of funding public safety service levels desired by the community," comma, I was hoping, would it be okay to substitute "maintaining existing and," comma, "where possible increasing public safety"? I, I find that language a bit vague, and I just, I, I think it would be important to tell the public that this is to maintain services that might otherwise go away, and that the other half of the benefit, where possible, we're going to, yeah, actually add more stuff. So I would just, you know, I'll send you the sentence offline, but I just want to find out if that would be okay to do. If you chose that language, you know, for a particular purpose.
Yeah, so I will say, this is, this is the first draft, right, that you're looking at. Just today, we had, we reached out to our bond counsel, who is also helping us out with this ordinance. She provided us some more examples of the ballot language. And so certainly, we can take your input, we can look at the other items that she provided. We do need to add that last sentence regarding the exemption for seniors and vets, so that was something that we needed to work with her to get specific language on. So we will be refining this version.
Okay, so this is not cut, you know?
This is not the final. And, and yes, we will be refining it, and then if, at the second reading before the council adopts it, if there's any amendments that need to be made in the council's majority opinion, then those can be made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Oxger.
Yes. Sorry. Yes. You, on the chart that has the impact on property tax revenue, and these are estimates that are going to be raised, are, do those take into account the exemptions? Do we have any idea what the amount of the exemptions are going to be?
No, I'm not sure how we could calculate that. I think, you know, we can reach out to King County and ask if, you know, what that typically looks like. I think it's, you have a number of people who need to qualify for that. I think we have about 17% of our community is, is senior citizens. So, you know, but I don't know how much their property is worth, so it's really, would be difficult to, to actually make that calculation. But you can, I don't know if it would be 10% or what. So I could, we could inquire with the county, see what they have to say, or we can ask the assessor next week, what he thinks.
Okay, the county already has a senior exemption.
Right.
Place. Would, would that follow that, that exemption, or is this going to be an exemption on top of that?
It would be the same exemption. Because it's, it's all through the county, so.
So then whoever the county has, so if the county already is recording it, then we would have those numbers.
Right, but I think this exemption applies to levies, for the most part. So, I mean, there's, I guess, if you qualify, and as I said, I'm still learning about this as well. The way I read the language is if you qualify for the exemption, that can exempt you from the increase that the levy would bring. So you're still going to be paying property tax. Maybe in extreme cases, it would, might exempt you from just a regular levy. So I don't, I don't know if they have numbers set aside for what, for Des Moines, for what exemption amounts they would have. Because we don't have any levies, property tax levies now, we just have a regular levy. So I would assume that to get exempt from just the regular levy, that would be a very small portion of people. So it's really trying to forecast out, well, how many people will be qualifying for this program if we have a levy? It's hard for me to say.
So we can, we have the assessor coming next week. We'll email him tomorrow and ask if he can provide that at the council meeting next week.
Okay, because, because the purpose of my question is that if, you know, we've, we've already figured that we have to go from 1.35 to 1.40, you know, is it possible we're going to have to go higher if we bring in those exemptions?
That's noted, yeah, we'll, we'll try to get that information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, for your second time.
And just, I'm being rhetorical, or whatever, but it's not like you get a, a tax roll. I mean, to oversimplify, you, you get a check, you know, or, okay, so it's not like you have this database of people's names and addresses.
Right.
And who gets the exemptions and so on. Okay, thanks.
Right, thank you. And, yes, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
This also might be a question that we can pepper the assessor, King County Assessor's office with, but is there opportunity in the, either in the pamphlet, the, or the postcard that we send out, or the announcement that we send out to residents and citizens, of a breakdown of exactly how much the city gets from the property taxes? Because I believe that if folks looked at a graphic of how much your actual property tax stays local, you might be amazed at how much it's divvied up by, oh yes, I'm seeing that tiny, tiny bit actually comes into our budget. And so I think that would be extremely enlightening to most folks, if you were to see a stacked bar that said, "This is how much goes to sound transit, this is how much goes to the Port of Seattle, this is how much goes to King County, this is how much goes to your schools, this is how much goes to fire." And I think that would be really helpful, because we don't actually see a great deal of those property taxes.
Right. When we do pass the levy annually, we do, every year, have a pie chart that makes that exact point, where we're like number five in all of the taxing districts that are on the property tax bill.
So I think to answer your question, yes.
Yes. Well, I was implying, yeah.
They wouldn't be on the ballot, but it, it could be, if it's factual information, it could be something that could be put in the mail or the, the one item that we send out.
Oh, my gosh. Sorry. Got to put my chickens away. Sorry.
You might have a second thing, but I'll have to pick on it. I can't remember. Thank you.
All right. Well, I hope it's not crucial to the, so, do I have, without any other questions, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to pass draft ordinance number 24-020 to a second reading on April 11th, 2024, for further council consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mahoney, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Mahoney.
Real quick, I'm just, because Mr. Lamprell, did I say that correctly?
Lamprell.
Yeah, thank you, I'll have to get the spelling sometime. We have a new, obviously, we're in the process of hiring our new city manager, and one of the tasks that the council and the finance committee will be is challenging him to look at cost and look at that type of, and look at structure. But the, the things that we can't discount is the fact that, in this, particularly in public safety, is some state policy over the last few years, how I think has directly resulted into, I think, here's, increase in crime. And we haven't been happy with the Superior Court of the felony level justice system and the ramifications that are faced there. And we've seen an increase in crime. We've also used ARPA dollars to subsidize, adding additional officers, while we've seen six, a 6% and 13% increase due to cost of labor, cost of goods, inflation, and interest rates that have escalated. And these are problems. Yes, we can talk about tens of thousands of dollars, but we have to talk about millions to, to ensure the public safety. The biggest thing here is that we are looking and putting forth where it should be to the voters, do they consider public safety, the issue that they claim it to be? And really, it's going to be there. If they're not willing to vote for it, then unfortunately, we're probably going to have to make changes, whether other services get sacrificed or public safety gets sacrificed, because we have to balance our budget. But taking into your point, yes, that will be considered. But it's, when it's going to happen in the, in the vein of the process, is difficult, because we kind of got a little bit of the cart before the horse, and we want some of these things established. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
I already used the supertanker thing, but this is something that has been developing for many, many years. And if there has been a defect in our taxing policy, it was that we did not keep that levy going in 2012. I, I want to really, how we, we need to sell this, and I want to encourage people interested in the pro and con thing to get on board with this, because taxing things like this abhor a vacuum. And if we do not create a really good pro committee and a sales thing, there will be external forces that will come in and create the anti-tax, because that's just how it is today. There will be someone from a statewide group, a nationwide group, who will come in and fill the vacuum and talk about it just based on, you know, and, and not knowing anything about our needs. And they will just start talking smack about it, and it will, you know, move some people. So please, this is something that you can do a great service for the community by being part of the pro committee and helping to sell this. Thank you.
Any other comments? I do have a few. I did, you know, during these discussions, even just this week, there was a mention about statistically how much percent of our general fund goes to public safety, something like, I think it was 45% or, you know, close to 50%. But that's the general fund. But we've got a huge budget. We've got restricted funds that come into the city that can only be spent on other things. So we've got a huge budget, somewhere like $100 million. So if you think about what the police, when we support our police with the money that goes through the city, it's something like 17%. So all the money that comes into the city and goes out to all the different things, it's, it's not 50%. It's, it's like 17. And this is for a department or an organization within this organization that is 24/7, 24/7. So it operates all the time. So I think 17% of a whole budget is a good deal. As, as far as, well, I believe we need this. I believe a majority of the citizens want this. And also to Jim's comments, you know, we just finished making a decision a couple minutes ago about a biennial budget. And the reason that we're doing it is because this council is very, very desirous of doing the right thing on behalf of the citizens and trying to do the very best thing we have with our money, our finances, what's in front of us. So we're doing everything we can to be responsible. We have this finance committee that will be out in front of the community on a monthly basis. So these subjects will be coming in front of us. So I, I feel like whether it's scrubbing the budget, or researching, or digging in, you're going to see that kind of stuff happening over the next couple of years especially. So I hope that you can see that this, this council is very committed to transparency and working this issue hard, so that when we go, we're going out to the citizens and asking, it's a value statement, and, and we're going to work to be careful in front of you. I, I guess my last question, any further recommendations from council on what you would like to see in the second reading? I think maybe you, you had this opportunity to do it, but just one more question, like if they're, they're wondering, anything else that you want to see in the second reading? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I want to echo what Councilmember Harris said. You put the language that it is not only about maintaining current levels, but also the ability to increase. And I think that is an important point. And I apologize for jumping on you, Councilmember Harris. I heard you were trying to make an amendment, it wasn't a motion, but I think your point is well But I think your point is well taken. And I would like to see that kind of language in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes. I think that it also would be helpful to hear an expansion on why going for a August election. Given that, given that we have it, we're on, we will be onboarding a new city manager, we're going through a new budgeting process, all of that, it, it would be helpful to, to hear an expanded rationale on why we're going for August.
Well, I'll just start.
Right now or next time?
Go ahead.
I'll just, go ahead and, I'll start. I think, one, having it in August will allow us to then program the results into our budget because by August, we're pre, we're preparing the preliminary budget. And if we wait until November, November is when we adopt our budget. So, we're, we would potentially be looking at a three million dollar question at the time we need to be adopting our budget. So, that's, that's the big reason is that in order to adopt our budget in November and December, if, if this doesn't pass, we're going to be spending four months figuring out how we cut three million dollars. And so, that, that's, that's a lot of money with a twenty-five million dollar budget. So, if it, if we wait till November, I mean, we're, we're meeting every night with this council to try to figure that out. I mean, that's going to, the timing is a big deal as far as our, getting our budget passed by the end of the year.
Councilmember Harris.
Two things. So, it turns out we have a tremendous amount of communication talent in this here town. And so, I will once again, I am deeply impressed with the way Highline Schools in particular, they sell these things like a boss. And it will be a really good, I'm not kidding here. I've, I've been through a few of these, and they don't automatically pass. So, it would behoove and, and all of us to work on, you know, the city to do an appropriate mailer and for the communications-oriented people to help get the word out in a, because, you know, we're not, we're not exactly like, my partner used to work for a company where they said, you know, oh, no, I won't go with that joke. The other thing is, I think for next time, it would be good to say that, to explain to people, because the most common message I got over the past couple of weeks has been, why don't you just take some of that there money out of that twenty-five million dollar bond thing we, you know? And I think it would behoove us to explain why money set aside for capital projects is not only inappropriate, but that it's not part of the budgeting hygiene that we wish to, you know, carry forward into the brighter future. And that's it.
Okay, I'll take Councilmember Grace Matsui and then Deputy, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you. We're still on the wish list for the next time you come with the, the next.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, for this part.
Wanted to make sure. So, looking at section number three, the purpose and description of the ballot proposition, I wanted to ask about the purpose. One of the things, and I'll, I'll echo what Mayor Buxton said about transparency, is being entirely clear about where this money is going to go. And I understand we don't necessarily want to encumber it into a specific fund necessarily. That's, we have given ourselves some latitude here. But under that section A, it says the amounts collected pursuant to the increase authorized may be used for funding the continual provision of public safety and for safety-related costs. And I'm wondering if we could make it even stronger by saying shall be used for public safety.
Yeah, yes. That's a good, good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Um, I, I actually wanted to address Councilmember Ox, I think it was Oxiger's, point about why we're aiming for August rather than November is that the amount of political noise that's going to exist in our environment in November during a presidential election, and all the House seats will be up, most of the state legislature seats will be up. You know, this is going to be a tremendous amount of political noise, and trying to get our message through that, you know, here in our little, little city is going to be really, really difficult. And also, I mean, to the point that was made earlier about there are people that reflexively vote anti-tax. And they don't stop to consider the implications of that, you know? And I think they're going to be turning out in the November election at a much higher rate. And so, you know, part of it is if we want to have a solid discussion within our community on this particular issue, then we have to put it on in the election that's not going to be overwhelmed by the amount of noise that's going to exist in November. You're just not going to be able to get the message through that because of the amount of money that's going to be spent on everything else during the election cycle. And, and it would really be a, a poor choice to try to put this on in November, aside from the budgetary considerations that were pointed out before.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other recommendations? All right, we have a motion on the table and discussion. I'm going to take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand for moving this forward. Looks like we have a seven-zero, unanimous, excellent. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have new agenda items for consideration. This is a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not previously been before the council. This is not a time for council action, four questions about old business. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
As I said last time, I would like to see the city reinstate some form of virtual meeting attendance, meaning Zoom. And I think that is particularly important as we get into this city manager search. I watched the meetings today and the citizens advisory thing, and it, and it was just painful to me. I'm sorry, but just with moving the mics around and everything. And so, I'm just seeing if there's some interest in taking a look at that. I don't know what committee, but, yeah.
Do we have two other council members that would like to entertain the subject right now? One other, two others. So, would this be something that we, we have three council members? Would this be referred to a committee or does this come on an agenda for discussion?
Either or.
Uh, I foresee this to be more of a discussion, so I'm thinking a study session.
Okay, we can, we can look into that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, moving on to council member reports, and we're going to start with Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I need to make a correction. I told folks that the non-residence pass was eighty dollars. It's actually a hundred dollars, so I want to make sure that's known. I hosted the Highland Forum yesterday, and Federal Way was the host city. But they talked, but the Mayor Farrell talked about making a sixty, he started out with sixty million, and then he corrected. He said seventy million dollars worth of infrastructure changes to his community. And what that was going to bring to the Commons Mall and some of the development, the Performing Arts Center and so forth, what it did for me was validate what we're doing at the Marina and down at Redondo is a good thing for our city's future. We also talked about tourism, and it was amazing. We had Seattle South Side Tourism Authority provide, present Mark Everton, and he does an excellent job for us. And some of the impressions and things increases that he got in the city. And now, I can tell you, other cities are struggling, like the biggest ball of yarn or whatever, to try to get to people that come to their communities. And we've got the waterfront. We own it in this community in the South Sound. And so, we have a great advantageous tool that nobody else has. So, it made me comforting in what we're trying to do there. There was, somebody contacted me, there's a youth resource fair. It's, and I'll read this. Join the Office of Congressman Ab Smith for a youth resource fair. This event will be connect, will connect youth and families in Washington's ninth district to resources for education, workforce development, recreation, and more. During the event, attendees will be able to meet and learn about, more about local community organizations with programs and communities for youth and young adults. And that's going to be Saturday, April sixth this year, from eleven to one o'clock at Foster High School in Tuck Willa. And then, the last thing I got to say is, you know, I'm a huge Gonzaga fan, so go Zags tomorrow night. And I, without ado, I have, my son is a graduate of the University of Tennessee, and they'll be going, and I gotta, I gotta go with it for them. And from what I understand, sorry, Harry, about San Diego State, man. With that, that ends my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I also wanted to extend my gratitude to the residents who reached out to me to have discussions about biennial budgeting, about the levy lid lift, and really share their expertise and time with me, which I felt was extremely helpful in framing my understanding of the implications, and also gave me a chance to talk to folks about what our potential would be if we said no to some of those items as well. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate that. I hope that we impressed upon folks today that the changes to biennial budgeting or budgeting in general will only increase transparency. And I hope that folks hear the commitment that at least I can speak for my own self, that I am committed to making sure that we have an extremely transparent budget process, and that folks are invited to participate in, in ways, whether it's through those outreach activities, whether it's through a poll that Jeff might send out later about people's budget priorities, or if it's just informational so that folks get a better understanding of how our budget is created, how we prioritize the spending of the citizens' money and things like that. So, I, I do hope that that continues. And one of the reasons why that is such a high priority for me is because I believe that transparency, transparency leads to trust. If you understand why we're making the decisions and we share as much information as we can about where the money is going, where it's coming from, then I hope you can see our intention and the values that go into that decision-making as well. And it, to me, it's really part of the report card of being a city council member. Do you understand why we're making these decisions? Do you understand the, the factors that we're considering? And as much as we can daylight that and make it clear to others, then I hope that it builds that understanding of all those things that we're taking into consideration and how we were forming those opinions instead of saying, and there's a vote, and the answer is yes, and then we just move on without any explanation. So, I do hope that that makes a tremendous difference. I know that it's something that I look for and the folks that represent me. Uh, I also want to say thanks to the folks that hopefully will reach out to us about the things that we discussed today. So, if you have opinions and thoughts about short-term rentals, about the fireworks even after it's been passed, feel free to reach out and tell us about it. Or you can have a coffee with the mayor at some point or reach out to us individually or through email because we do, in fact, read almost everything that gets sent to us. We do get some strange solicitation emails sometimes for things like long cutting services and things like that. But aside from that, I do read, yeah, floor mats. Yeah. I do read everything that comes in. And there are times that I know that the city manager and their staff are going to respond. So, even if you don't get a direct email from me personally, we are reading what's coming in, or at least I can speak for myself. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you all at our next meeting.
Well said. Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
Uh, I don't have any report or anything tonight. I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up in, in person and those that joined us on the YouTube channel and on Channel Twenty-One, and look forward to hearing your guys' comments on anything that we discuss tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
For the sake of getting done here, no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. First of all, I want to wish those who celebrate a happy Purim. It should be the happiest and, you know, most out-of-control holiday in the Jewish calendar. Not so much this year. Do the best you can. Happy Easter. It's the most important holiday for me of the year. It's a time of renewal. And that message is not lost on me, both in my private life, but also with the city. We're going through tremendous changes, and, you know, it could be fabulous. I attended the Port's all-day planning meetings. They do separate planning meetings apart from the regular meetings that you all, some, I got, no, some people theoretically could watch and attend. But it's a, it's something that our council used to do back in, before the dinosaurs, you know, like two thousand eight or whatever. And it would not be the worst idea in the world to bring those back every once in a while. They, people were just as different as we are now, and somehow it seemed to get to that long-term planning, or at least some sort of directionality. I don't, I don't know. But it looked, for them, it's extremely important because they're so massive. And without those separate meetings, just to talk about the direction of the supertanker, they could never get through their regular meetings. I watched the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I just, I want to absolve those of you who think that, you know, we have differing opinions, but I, I want to absolve you of, if you're on the CAC of, you're not like an extension of the city outreach. It's up to the city to do the outreach. Speaking personally, I want to hear what you think about what's going on on your street, okay? Now, I'm, I don't think we should be like recruiting you to go out and, you know, spread the good news. Ooh, I just put in a gospel reference. The, I heard people talking about some stuff, and I'll just close with two things. I heard, you know, sort of a disparaging thing about Burian Police and everything. Whatever is going on in Burian right now, it has nothing to do with their police force, okay? Sea-Tac Normandy Park also contract with King County, and everybody is doing a fine job. So, many of these things are policies of the electeds. And I just, having a police department is not just an opportunity, it's a challenge. That's just a fact. And we should give unbiased information to the public, that it's plus, but it also has some, you know, downsides too. Other, you know, but I, I fully support it. Otherwise, I wouldn't be on board with this levy lid lift. The other thing is people talked about economic development and somehow the proximity to the airport. It's like living next to a gold mine, and you just assume that somehow you could, you know, get some of the gold. But it's simply impossible. And I hope that somehow we can provide more information to people about really what the reality is of living next to this airport. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, well, you know, thank you all very much. I like a lot of what was said up here about transparency, and I want to echo a lot of that without repeating it so that we can get out of here at a reasonable hour. But, you know, I, this is very important to everyone up here, and their own, their own way of going about it is always a little different. But, you know, we want you, as the citizens, to understand But, you know, we want you as the citizens to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think everybody up here is open to conversations anytime. I had a meeting this week with Mayor Buxton with representatives from the city of Faujou. Faujou, China is our sister city. They're, they're a very different sister. They have, I think it was 1.8 million residents. They have a small district that we are sort of paired with that's only 750,000 people. But nonetheless, this is a sister city program that has been set up. And we both, you know, both sides were able to share a lot of what was going on in the cities and talk about whether there were opportunities to, you know, sort of share more information, perhaps create investment opportunities one way or the other, and what, you know, Des Moines might, might do in response to that. But certainly there are a lot of cultural issues that we had to overcome. It was all done through a translator, but nonetheless, it was, it was a very enlightening event. I also led a Citizens Action Committee tour of the new theater, which, you know, is just turning out great. It is amazing what they've done. And several people on the Citizens commi, Action Advisory Committee did, you know, mention that, one of them was in contracting, I don't remember exactly who it was, but, and it was fascinating to him because he'd always driven by and, you know, was wondering, you know, why the heck is this taking so long? And now that he's been inside and he's seen what they've done, his question is, how did they get it done so fast? Because the inside of the theater is just a completely different place than it was, and it also has apartments on top. You may notice that the sign on the theater is now lit. And, you know, so it's just, it brings that old piece into the new in a, in a very nice way. You know, the Citizens Action Committee, I talked about a little bit, and, you know, we asked members of the Citizens Action Committee to actually interact with the people that they are, their neighborhoods, they're there to interact with and bring some of that information forward. You know? So it's, that's what we're looking for, is that sort of neighborhood communication and bringing that forward. I attended the groundbreaking at Local 242. I think Mayor Buxton's going to talk about that. Just a fabulous event that they had. I also attended the Des Moines, Destination Des Moines Board Meeting, liaison with Destination Des Moines. And it sounds like a lot of the events that we hope that Destination Des Moines is going to get back into doing are actually taking place and they're working well with the city and getting a lot, a lot done, which is, which is quite nice. And, you know, I, I know my Aztecs from San Diego State may have, you know, gone down tonight and I didn't get to watch it. But I just wanted to remind Councilmember Mahoney that this was a replay of last year's championship game between UConn and the Aztecs. I don't, you know, Gonzaga wasn't anywhere to be found. I'm just saying. Thank you.
They might this year.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing all these reports and appreciate you all being here. Yes, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, well, for one, thank you to, there's been a lot of, I appreciate all of you reaching out to different ones of us. There have been a lot of people reaching out to me and my colleagues to talk about all of these subjects, and we are so happy to meet with you. Thank you for taking your time to, to meet with us in person. I attended the Laune 242 groundbreaking. They've got a beautiful training facility that they're building right up on the highway there, and I attended with the deputy mayor. This is so exciting for our community. It is going to reinforce support and bolster the workforce pipeline. They, they're partnering with Highline Schools on some programs. It's going to be a huge thing for us regionally, and you know, Laune spans North America, right? North America and Canada, so it's going to be a draw for people, but it's a big deal for Des Moines to host this facility here in our city. So I feel very proud. Really great partnership organization. So they're going to put 1,000 students through that a year. Pretty amazing, that, 1,000 people going into the pipeline. South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, we met, the executive board met, and we opened a conversation about homelessness portion of our name and beginning to entertain how we're going to possibly work or begin to move into that. We've been working affordable housing since we set the organization, the partnership up. It's 11 cities across South County, plus a little bit of King County there. And we've been doing fantastic work, so just letting you know, we're moving into our big I hosted a chat with the mayor, and I called it Chat with the Mayor because we had it at the library. So I did bring tea, but there wasn't coffee there. And, but I'm doing a few of these at the library because it's on the, on a transit line, it's free, it's accessible, so just trying that out. And I'll tell you, our library system is fantastic. You, you can get, have a meeting space in the library that's full of, they have resource centers in all of our libraries. When I was there at the Woodmont Library for this event, they were having, the whole backroom was taken up with these people that had volunteered to do people's taxes. And you could just sign up for that. I said, really? I could have done that? And they said, yep, you could have. And so it's pretty amazing to just go into a public library and say, what do you guys have for the community? I would challenge you to do that. It was a great event, by the way. Also attended multicultural night at Pacific Middle School, and that's not the only school that has done it. Out of Highline Public Schools, several schools do these little multicultural nights. Well, it wasn't a little thing, and it was cultures, all, all these cultures from all over the world gathered together doing, providing their food and dancing and costumes and interacting and art and posters on the wall and all their parents and music and laughing. It was absolutely incredible. I loved it. So if you ever get, hear about one of these at one of the schools, go, it's so fun. You, you will not leave without laughing. Okay, well, coming up, you know, my colleague already mentioned it's a special Judeo-Christian weekend, and there's a really cool Good Friday service tomorrow night. Several churches crossing denominational barriers, gathering together to host a big service in the community at Des Moines Gospel Chapel tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. I always like it when people cross their lines and, and get together. The city's hosting a really cool event, Extravaganza, at the beach park at 9:00 AM on Saturday. So if you want to register, you still can register, just type in Google Extravaganza, two G's, with Des Moinesois, and you'll get a link. Let's see, well, adding to the beautiful weather, on Monday, April 1st, I, I'm believing that probably a bunch of you are going to get messages about your friends being pregnant. But other than that, that took a minute, right? April 1st. So the next meeting date is April 4th, 2024. It'll be a study session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And Councilmember Mahoney, would you like to move to adjourn?
Hell yeah, I'd like to move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Oh, vote, sorry. All, all in favor. Oh, looks like it's unanimous, 7-0. It's a good, good habit for the evening, 7-0. Yeah, you're the monarch. If you say so, we do it. Yep, blocking the way here.